Okay. Okay, good evening. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I know the Beer Board ran longer than usual, so, um, but thanks for, we'll go ahead and get started on time because, uh, I don't know, we like to start on time. We will start with the invocation led by Vice Mayor Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fugit. Please rise as you're able.
Please bow your heads. Tonight we gather to seek justice, well-being, and sound progress for our community. In Knoxville, we pray for safety, human dignity, meaningful work, and shelter for everyone. We also work towards these things in a tangible way. We wish the same for those outside of Knoxville. There are no others, only people. We ask for peace where there is war and reform where there is injustice, and we aim our work towards goodness this evening. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas. Seven members present mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes from the February 27th workshop?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on the minutes of the March 4th regular meeting?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to be withdrawn from tonight's agenda? Any items to be postponed? Any items to be added by motion? Are there any consent items? There are no consent items. Okay. I have a very short mayor's report. It's spring break for Knox County Schools and University of Tennessee, so some people are out of town, and, but we still have work to do, so thank you, everybody who can be here, and for those who are traveling, safe travels and come back rejuvenated. Next week, we expect tens of thousands of visitors to come to Knoxville for big years. Um, I don't know, it must be the 12th or 14th time? I don't know, it's been happening and it keeps getting bigger and better. The 4-day music festival starts on the 27th, attracting people from all over the world. There's going to be a lot of free events for community members, and of course, ticketed events for those who have tickets. This is an amazing opportunity to enjoy so many genres of music, incredible local venues, and a chance for us to really showcase our amazing city. So thank you to everyone who's working to make this festival possible again this year, and thanks to the people of our city for being good ambassadors of Knoxville. That concludes, oh, rules of decorum. Quick reminder, we are here to do the city's official business. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum need to sign up with Mr. Johnson, the city recorder, before 4:00 p.m. Do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, you must stay on topic. Remarks must be germane to the question ahead of the assembly, that is. Statements must have bearing on whether the pending motion should be adopted. Those who fail to adhere to these rules will be ruled out of order. For those who are listening, please note, if you disrupt a public meeting, you will be asked to leave or escorted out. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. That concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from councilmembers? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I just want to give a quick update. The, um, the committee that met on council rules and charter met prior to Beer Board at 3:30 today. We will meet again on April 1st, um, at 3:30 in this building to continue going through our, um, list. We're down to Rule 18, and we keep plugging, so, um, and we got a report from Baker Center, and so more work to be done, but just want to let everybody know we're, we're chugging through it, and again, remind all my council colleagues to please take a look at the rules, and if there's something that you want to make sure that we get addressed, beginning at Rule 18, please send that to Mr. Johnson, and he lets us know whether you're on the committee or not, if councilmembers have issues they want us to talk about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I am the council's representative on the Knoxville Community Media Board, and just wanted to share a quick update since we were talking about our agenda and expectations during this session. I'm going to try to share a regular update, but, um, we're currently reviewing our bylaws and went through a discussion of some changes needed for our bylaws, and, uh, our meetings are not open to the public, just so you know, but happy to report back. Usually we meet by Zoom. That's our regular way of meeting. And, um, one issue that I did bring forward to speak with the staff, which I was asked to do, was about when we'll be able to merge our new, uh, system that we can see on our screens here, uh, that shows the public our agenda and allows them to follow along. When will that be merged with the broadcast, uh, that members of the community see from home? And just wanted to let you know that that's something that's being worked on, um, and moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Was the park listening session announced?
Uh, not this meeting. I think it was announced last one, but, um, if you want to announce it again?
Yeah, remind the community about the park community listening sessions that are happening, and the next one is this Thursday, March 20th, uh, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the City County Building in the Small Assembly Room.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further lights on, we'll move on to, um, Item 8A.
8A is a resolution reappointing Joan Cronin and Tim Hill as directors of the Sports Authority of the County of Knox and the City of Knoxville, Tennessee.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
8B is a resolution appointing Mallory Alder to serve as the at-large Seat B Representative to the City of Knoxville Public Property Naming Committee.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A is an ordinance appropriating the sum, the total sum of $21,394.06 from the Parks and Recreation Department's Grants and Bedevilance Fund, noting same for completed projects to various qualified organizations as part of the Challenge Grant Award Program.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B is an ordinance to change, or rather, to amend, ordinance O-107-2019, known and cited as the City of Knoxville zoning code, to remove previously approved planned district designations from property located at Zero Millard Beats Road, Millard Beats Development LLC, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Councilman Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, the person working on this is Mr. Presley. I think he's here today. Mr. Presley, are you here? There he is. And, um, I know you had stepped out of the meeting last time just as the item came up, and, um, I just wanted to verify, you know, when we have our application, um, you have the box you check about whether you talk to the neighbors or not. I know that happens early in the process. It was checked no, so I just want to make sure you have had conversations with the neighbors.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Presley, if you could, um, turn on the microphone and then state your name and address for the record, please. There's a button that has a little human icon on it. Uh...
Nope.
Is it on? Okay.
Uh, David, David Presley, 705 Gate Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37909. Uh, yes, sir. We, uh, since that time, we've spoken to many neighbors in that area, as well as reached out to some we haven't been able to make contact with, but we've gotten some good feedback.
Okay. And what was the project you're doing?
Uh, we're doing 10 townhomes off of, uh, Kim Watt, which is off Miller Beats.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate you reaching out to the neighbors.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Great. More housing. Encouraging. Uh, any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located at 6200 Paper Mill Drive from CG 3 to CH 2 District, Benjamin C. Mullins, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to accept proposals to provide excess liability insurance coverage, vehicle and equipment damage insurance coverage, and inland marine insurance coverage for mobile equipment, all as part of the city, Cities and K-Trans Management Incorporated's self-insured liability program for an estimated annual premium of $762,048.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend an agreement with Health Equity Incorporated to update funding language for administrative services for the city's sponsored flexible spending account and health reimbursement account for city employees.
Move to second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Johnson, Mermian, and Thompson Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $315,698 to provide professional design services for the Riverwalk to City View Greenway Connection Project.
Motion made to approve and seconded.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, oh, Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief Justice, just a question for you. We exchanged email back and forth. I just had to say it, I'm sorry. Uh, this is the, uh, the, uh, missing link of the Greenway that heads downriver on the south waterfront, and this goes from, uh, I guess, basic design to construction design and implementation. Is that right?
Yes, this contract, Tom, correct me if I'm incorrect, is to further the design that we have. That has been a concept that's approved by the railroad, so this does take it to that next level that the railroad requires for final approval, so we can have construction documents and then advertise for contractors.
And this helps meet the general requirement of the South Knoxville Vision Plan and, uh, to have one contiguous Riverwalk alongside the water, right?
Yes.
And the estimated completion of this construction is January 27?
So this, this, what you're voting on right now is not construction, it's further design, but the completion of the agreement for the funding arrangement with the prior owner is January of 2027, yes.
And that is a construction deadline?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a res- 11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Superior Pavement Marking Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $195,052.50 for the 2025 pedestrian and bicycle pavement marking project.
Move to second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with, by which the City of Knoxville will lease a portion of the South Knoxville Community Center to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Tennessee Valley, of the Tennessee Valley, for a term of 10 years for a fee of $37,938 per year.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Uh, Councilmember Parker?
I just have a small friendly amendment, um, to recommend there's a, uh, just a spelling error within the resolution, and so I wanted to make a motion to amend the resolution and the last whereas to replace "exists" with "exits."
Okay. Uh, thank you for catching that. Um, a motion made to amend, just as Councilmember Parker described, to fix the typo. It's been made and seconded. Does everyone understand the amendment? Uh, okay, all those, any further questions about the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion to amend passes. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. Are there any further questions? Councilmember Parker?
No.
Okay. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement by which the City of Knoxville will lease a portion of the South Knoxville Community Center to the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee for a term of 10 years for a fee of $4,200 per year.
Move to second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Smith?
I just want to compliment, this, uh, this community center is, is a very important to South Knoxville. I just want to commend, uh, Parks and Rec, I see Director Ely in the back, and, um, uh, Boys and Girls Club, and CAC. This is a community affair, and it is a very special place for a lot of people in South Knoxville, and it, uh, there's a good harmony there, so thank you for all that you do to put into it.
Yeah, I see Lisa Higginbotham from CAC is here, so we appreciate CAC's partnership and, um, at this place, and then so many other parts of our city as well. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office in the amount of $35,000, $35,000 with no required local match to provide overtime funding for pedestrian safety campaigns.
Motion made to approve and seconded. One person has signed up to speak against this item. Constance Everie, are you present? Miss Everie, present? Okay, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to apply for and accept a grant funding from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office in the amount of $300,000 with no required matching funds to support traffic enforcement, traffic safety, and safe community programs. The funding will pay for equipment supplies and overtime for KPD officers conducting enforcement and for officers and technicians who oversee programs such as the child passenger safety, teen driving, and older driver safety.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Constance Everie signed up to speak against this item. Has she appeared in the last minute? I don't think so, so seeing no further, that is the only person who signed up to speak. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation to coordinate internet crimes against children task force investigator travel and training pursuant to a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Programs in an amount not to exceed $100,000, with an option to renew the agreement for one additional one-year period upon written agreement by the parties.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Miss Everie signed up to speak against this. Is she present? Apparently not. Uh, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. Any further questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funding from the Tennessee Department of Finance Administration in the amount of $53,136 with no required matching funds to support Project Safe Neighborhoods.
Okay.
There is no J on the agenda.
Okay.
Is, are we on 12A then? 12A.
Okay. That's a technical, technical issue, my apologies. I was like, I was like, what are you talking about?
It's, it's definitely on my agenda.
Okay. Anything else on there?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
12-
We'll move on to 12A.
I am curious, is it showing? It is showing.
Uh, yeah, I don't, uh, Project Safe Neighborhoods, yeah, that's not on the agenda.
I'm guessing this is for a future agenda. Okay.
It was a bonus. Bonus round.
Point of order, Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Uh, 12A is an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Knoxville City Code, Article 1, Section 4-1, Article 2, Section 4-76, and Section 4-77 related to the sale of beer on certain property to streamline the code, to provide consistency for event management and safety, and provide equitable opportunity for events to be held throughout the city.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion has been made to approve and seconded. Uh, there's one person signed up to speak on this item in favor, Mr. Seth Barber. Lord Seth Barber, come to the podium.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Seth Barber, Rocky Hill, Tennessee. I don't want to really interrupt, we're on a smooth roll. I think we could just bypass my talking at all. Long story short, I wrote a whole, whole speech on this. Um, I've been working with Happy Holler, we do Hollaroo, hence my cool t-shirt. We want the ability to do events like other parts of the city do events, downtown, Market Square, Gay Street, and Old City. I believe that those, some of the special events that they have done have been fantastic for the growth in this city, and I'm really proud of seeing that growth. I grew up here, uh, went to UT in the aughts, where there's nothing happening downtown, so, um, I'm excited to see how much the city's grown, but I think it's time to look out and see what else we have going on in the city, um, and the other parts of the city, to get a chance to, to partake in some of these events, and this will make a huge difference as a promoter, as a business owner in the city, to be able to do some of these things that these other neighbors have been able to do. I'm happy to take any questions on the process, if anybody has any.
If councilmembers have questions during their discussion, they'll call on you at that time, but, uh, did you have anything else you wanted to add in your remaining time?
I think that is the totality of what I wanted to get out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this item. All those in favor? No, I don't see any lights on.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Ryder.
Having a great time today. Anyway, sorry, forgot to push my light out. Okay, um, so, uh, let me get started. Here's the sponsor of this. Um, I gave you guys things on the forum, and Mr. Johnson also shared them. You also have a couple of amendments that are somewhat housekeeping and also putting something back that was out, so, uh, bear with me as I cover those things. Um, I'll, I'll read a little bit of this just to cover for the, for the general public. Our current code limits temporary serving areas and special event beer permits to a list of specifically named locations that have evolved over time. It's been an additive process in our code. When a new park or a new place came online, Baker Creek, Lake Shore, um, there were some revisions to where things were preferred to happen in downtown, um, and those were added to the code item by item by item. So it seemed like a good time to review some of that when other areas were making requests. Um, and the question was, do we just add another name and define another location? Or do we, um, and by doing that, we're omitting other places, and what happens is when someone like Happy Holler, um, that group and organization there, when they want to get a special event beer permit, they go to Ms. Brewer's staff at Special Events, that's the first stop, and, um, they are told they're, that they cannot apply for a beer permit, and that's where it stops unless they come to a council member and say, hey, what can we do to change this? So that Q Lauren and lots of conversations starting last year have been happening to figure out what was the best way to skin this cat, because it is a complex issue by the nature of it being additive over time and multiple sections are being touched. Um, there were conversations about should this be limited in certain places, and, and the, the issues there is, well, what about if this, and what about if that? So what I want to clearly communicate is this is not about thou shalt get a beer permit, this is about the opportunity to apply. Applying does not mean that thou shalt get one, it means you may apply. And, um, also to get special event beer permits for events like Hollaroo or AMBC Bike Fest at Baker Creek is one that I frequently go to, Brew Fest, many of our other events, some of them that we approved tonight, um, those permits in locations that are allowed at this time or in the future, um, they do not come to Beer Board and, until they are approved and have been vetted thoroughly by the special events permitting process, which is a process that goes through KPD, um, I believe KFD touches that as well, engineering, um, and, Ms. Brewer from Special Events is here to answer any specific questions we have about special events permitting, which what we're voting on tonight does not necessarily govern that. I just want it to be very and abundantly clear that they handle all of those components and where something might happen and what might get closed or what property is used before it is considered and possible for a beer permit. So, there are three components to what we're voting on tonight. There is 4-1, which is Article 1, 4-1 in our code, and that section covers possession or consumption on certain property that's, so in essence, it's, it's prohibited to have an open container or consume in pretty much anywhere unless you have an on-premise permit. That section also additionally currently has language that is also slightly different. It includes language for a, um, hold on, let me call it the right thing, facilities use permit for Lake Shore Park. There's some different uses that happen under that permit. So, um, I will, we have a motion on the floor, um, and I will make an amended motion in a moment, but for my colleagues, I would like to point out that you have been given a handout from Mr. Johnson, and that is the amended section 4-1 that I will speak to briefly. And what happens is it strikes the proposed D that was in the packet and puts back section D that is currently in the code. Um, and that covers the facilities use permit at Lake Shore Park. So the only thing, the only changes that are in this is it just correctly refers to the sections 476 and 477, and then adds Lake Shore Park. So I'll touch on that in a moment. And then, 4-1, again, is just possession or open containers, as well as the special facilities permit for Lake Shore Park. And then, um, if you move on, our current 476 and 477, the current variations of them, they cover special event beer permits and limitations to where they can be and the criteria to govern those sales, um, whether they are in public and private spaces. There's a little bit of cleaning up and housekeeping in, um, for, so the proposal is that 476 in the future will only house temporary serving area special permits. So temporary serving area special events for anyone who might have gone to these, which I actually have not, apparently I don't get out enough, is if, um, some of the restaurants might have a special event, and they'll have like a tented or additional area, that is a special, a special serving area permit. Um, so those, um, might happen at a Mexican restaurant for Cinco de Mayo, or they might happen in, um, what was I going to say? Because I'm going to run out of time. Because I'm going to run out of time. They might happen in Cumberland for football games. They have extensive, larger areas for tailgating. So, 476 that we are voting on tonight, the changes to that, which I have no amendments to, are, is just combining and condensing, because Cumberland only has a few exceptions, and that now included some residential language. Okay. Then 477, which I do have a couple of amendments to, is now where the special events beer permits live. Those beer permits, again, cannot be issued unless a special event permit has happened and been approved, and it is reviewed by engineering, KPD, KFD, Public Works, and works with the calendar and capacity of staff. And so, that is what those are, and they are now condensed into 477. The criteria, particularly that I want to highlight to you, which is in Section G of that, those are rules that I believe everyone mostly on this council voted on in February 2020. We added those for Downtown Festival District, so those were new in February 2020, and those are guidelines that apply to events, to special events with special event beer permits. So we instituted those in February 2020, and I'm going to run out of time. The idea is to apply those rules to other places. And so, that leads us to, I don't know if my colleagues will give me additional few seconds, but...
Give you a motion to give additional time.
Okay, if there's no objection, will the maker of the motion have two more minutes, I guess?
I might not even need that long.
Okay.
I'm moving along, so sorry, folks. Again, I'm focusing on G here. These are rules that apply to one area that was allowed to get special event permits, and the idea is that all, those rules seem to have been successful, and that those rules could be applied to other places. In review, those rules needed a couple of modifications after this got published last Thursday, and that is what is in the amended packet I'm about to make a motion for. And just G4, just adding the word distinctive, so that it's clear that you don't have to go out and get a branded customized wristband, but one thing that was applied to downtown festival area was that you had to have a wristband in order to get a drink, and now everyone should be doing a wristband, no matter where their special event area is, or their event is. And then number six. Number six was specifically about single-use containers. There are some people like Brew Fest that use a commemorative little smaller cup that they use for tasting, that's just one example. And single-use containers encourage people to throw them away, and if we want to get deeper into that, I can, with an event like that, would encourage each individual person to use about 30 different small containers. So, just wanted to be clear what that edit is about. J is clarifying World's Fair Park. You should also have a map, and that map is detailed in the code. And then M, which is the latest addition, and I apologize for that, is to put back language about Lake Shore Park, and that refers back, that's referenced in Section 4-1. So, I am happy to answer more questions as we move along. Ms. Brewer is here to answer questions. And on finality, I would like to make a substitute, I would move to substitute for the pending Section 1 and Section 3 of the ordinance, the proposed Section 1 and 3 as contained in the handouts that each member has.
Is that a motion, a substitute motion, or a motion to amend?
It's a motion to amend.
So, Councilmember Ryder is making a motion to amend the original motion as described in this handout. Does everyone understand the motion to amend? Is there a second? Okay. Any questions or discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Parker, is that about the amendment? No. Okay. All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion to amend carries. Now we're back to the original motion as amended. Councilmember Parker, questions or discussion?
Well, there is a little bit of overlaps with the amendment we just did, but it's more of a general question and trying to understand the process. But there is a, well, specifically, if we're looking at Section 4.77, Section J, where it states that it's unlawful to charge admission for entry or deny public access into a special event area, I'm trying to understand that policy and process a bit more when it comes, because we already have special event areas, we already have beer sales in those areas.
Mr. Frost, you have a response to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That was put in when we did the Downtown Festival District, because we thought if you had an event on Gay Street, you shouldn't, you should be able to get unimpeded to Mass General Store, for sake of argument, you shouldn't have to pay to visit businesses, for example.
So are we envisioning with the general application of this policy, rather than specifying specific sites? You know, for instance, if there was a special event on Central Avenue, how are the events contained so that you can ensure people attending the event are of age?
Yeah. Ms. Brewer, I think our Special Events Director can explain how we do this now, and that wouldn't change at all, is my understanding. Ms. Brewer, if you could just state your name and position for the record.
Kendra Brewer, Director of Special Events, City in Knoxville. So, an event at Central Avenue is going to be just like it is an event down here on Gay Street, Market Square. If there's alcohol that is going to be sold at the event, we will bike rack off an area, which will not necessarily be a beer garden, but alcohol will not be able to leave within those points. And those that are serving and selling the alcohol will have to check ID and wristband. It's how it works downtown, that's how it will work down Central Avenue, that's how it will work other places throughout the city.
So even if it's on a public sidewalk, we're still allowed, even though we have this in our code, to create this beer garden and not allow public access?
No, public access can still go, they just wouldn't be able to purchase alcohol. It will not keep anybody from going in, they will just not be able to leave the corralled area with open container. They'll only be able to drink within the confines of that particular space within the event.
Are there any age restrictions on that space at all?
It's, as long as you are 21, you have proper ID, and you are banded, you can purchase drinks, just as if you were to go into a restaurant. If you were to go onto Market Square, and there's a concert that somebody is having, and they are selling alcohol, like Sundown in the city back in the day, anybody could go, they would just have to show ID and prove that they are 21 years of age, and have a wristband.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Fugit.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, first of all, Councilwoman Ryder, I appreciate the inordinate amount of time that you've spent on working on this. This is not an easy lift, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into trying to make this better for all across the city. I do think that it is, you know, it evolved over time, because you used to only have events at World's Fair Park, or Gay Street, or Market Square, and I too remember a time when there was nothing going on in Knoxville. So, the fact that there's so much going on, that people want to enjoy neighbors and unique parts of our city all across Knoxville is encouraging, and I think this is a way to spread some of the wealth of that kind of traffic for businesses and communities. The more we have festivals in different parts of the city, the more people learn about their city, and it's better for the merchants in those places. And I think that I have confidence in the special event permitting process, I have seen that work over a number of years, and I also think people need to be aware of the fact that if fees are associated with that, the nonprofit that has the event must pay fees. This is not just something that the city does for free. If you want a special event, police, overtime, that kind of stuff, the event carries that cost burden. So, I do intend to support this, and thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Beer Board Chair Ryder for all the work she's done on this, and, you know, I think that there has been, you know, an approach in the past where we've kind of addressed one issue at a time versus addressing things in a different way, and so I think you're trying to accomplish that, so I appreciate what's being done here with regard to making it a more streamlined and clear process. As I understand it from reading these, and I appreciate the explanation at the beginning, what I'm seeing is that you have a Section 476, which is talking about temporary serving areas for special event permits, where it's somebody who already has a on or off premises, and it's basically so that you can have a 20-foot area on the exterior wall of your establishment. So, that is the section, that's, you know, just making it very clear for everyone, what we're talking about in 76 is that. In 77, what we're talking about is that any charitable organization, nonprofit or political organization can have a special event, and that can occur anywhere in the city, any commercial space, any residential space, anywhere. And they have limitations on when they can do it. You know, you can have six one-day events per organization in any 12-month period, or two lasting up to three days consecutively in any 12-month period. So, I think that pretty well encapsulates what we're talking about. So, we've got a really robust expansion of where some of these events can take place that with regard to the special events permit for this. So, I guess I've got several questions, but I think the first one I had was maybe from Mr. Barber, and Mr. Barber, if you could come down. I appreciate you reaching out to me, I was trying to wrap my hands, my arms around this thing, and there's a lot going on here, so it took me a little bit, so I appreciate your patience in getting back to you. But, I also, I remember you and I have talked several times before...
Sure.
...about the event you've been wanting to do in Happy Holler, and kind of this concept, right? And so I appreciate you continuing to work on that and those efforts. When do you do the Happy Holler event? What's the date for that?
This year, we have, May 17th is our Hollaroo 25.
Okay.
We're looking at it in October date as well, I've got a whole separate thing that I'm going to run it all you guys with on that one, too. I want to set a Guinness Book Record here in Knoxville, but that's a separate thing.
That's a separate deal.
We'll work on that later.
Not about beer.
Do what?
Not about beer.
No, it's just a different special event, yes.
Okay.
But, no, this one's May 17th, we want to do a spring event every year, that includes the Soapbox Derby, Street Fair, and Music Festival.
Okay, so May 17th, and you hold that event in a commercial area, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. But it's more, what your vision for this is more than just, you know, there's places with on-off premises where they can do the expanded 20 feet, you're talking about, you want to do the Section 477, not the 476?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So you've got a little bit of a time crunch to deal with this.
Absolutely, like, we're, with the other parts of the permitting process, with the beer permit, special events, and all that stuff, we are in a pretty strict timeline to get this ordinance changed, so that we can get the beer permit for the one here in May.
Okay. And I don't have any objection to the event that you're talking about, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, I thought it was a good idea back when we were first talking about it. So, I don't have any issue with what you're trying to do, and I understand now the timeframe of what's going on here.
There is a little urgency at play here, yes, sir.
I got you. Okay, that's what I had there. So, my next, and so I appreciate your time. Mr. Frost, when Beer Board is approving permits, we're usually doing that in an administrative role. With what we're looking at here with these changes, is this approval process that Beer Board will be going through, is this discretionary, or are we looking at this in an administrative way?
Thank you, Councilmember Roberto. I conferred with Ms. Dyer in the Law Department, and we're of the shared opinion that it is within the Beer Board's discretion to approve or deny this type of permit.
Okay. So basically, Beer Board members could take it upon themselves to make a decision about, hey, I think there's a safety issue here, I think there's something else going on here, and make a motion to deny at that point?
Yes, that's our opinion.
Okay, I'll let my other colleagues speak, thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
Just quickly, I do plan to support this, and wanted to echo what some of my other colleagues stated about the work that's gone into this, and what was shared with council, and wanted to just thank Councilmember Ryder for the work that you put in into providing us very clear documents that allowed us to go through these changes. I appreciate the use of the council forum, including the amendments that you posted there, and I really appreciate how the item was included in our agenda, so that we could see the changes and we could see the original language. So I just wanted to thank you for how you've approached bringing this ordinance before us.
Okay, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, I just wanted to really quickly touch on a couple of things, because they are in here for very specific reasons. One of the questions that colleagues have asked about was specifically J, which is the unlawful to charge admission for entry or deny public access. And the reason World's Fair is an exception is because that's where some of the concerts occur, where there's ticketed entry to those things down there, and so that is why you have a map and very specific boundaries for that space. Mr. Frost did answer this, but it's very important to say that the intent of public spaces, like our parks, our public streets, our sidewalks, these are the public's spaces, and so the intent is, the public should not be excluded from a space. And a great example of that is, we come downtown for Chalk Walk, we just voted on their special event beer permit tonight, we can come downtown and do Chalk Walk, there's a beer garden area, you can do the beer, there's spaces they can do that, as well as Rossini is another example. And, so, I just wanted to be clear that this is not for someone to be able to take public spaces, bound it off, and expand their business, to be able to have a larger business footprint. So that is pretty critically important to me, and that's why that part is in there. So, and then, Ms. Brewer, if you don't mind, I do want some clarity on cost to the permatee. What does the city, how, the city bills back for certain things, and what types of things do the permetees pay for to be able to do an event?
So they'll have to pay the beer permit fee, to start with. They'll have to pay for items such as bike racks, road closure signs, KPD, and EMS. So they will receive an invoice from the city, Public Service and Traffic Engineering, when the event is over, on what equipment has been used, how many bike racks have been placed, how much fencing to cordon off the area, barricades for street closures, detour signs, and so forth.
Okay, so the taxpayer's not paying that?
No, they are not.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. And then the last thing that I wanted to comment on, when the conversation started, it's, do we just add, you know, Happy Holler and create bounds for that? And then I started thinking of other places, and I'm like, well, what about the space in your community, or your community, or, you know, there's just other places. We had a conversation about different zoning and areas, the thing is, is when you start looking at the map, there are places, oh, Ms. Brewer, I'm going to ask you another quick question about that, I'm so sorry. There are places where someone might want the opportunity to apply for a permit, that does not mean they're going to get approved for a special events permit, which Ms. Brewer, that's what I'm going to ask you about. But there was a, there was one time where one of the neighborhoods in the 4th District had a long table dinner in the neighborhood street, there are some neighborhoods that do things in dead ends and cul-de-sacs in the neighborhood, and so, we don't know that those events are going to fit into the calendar, or that there's going to be available capacity with city staff for those things to occur, but it didn't make sense to say... make sense to say, because the zoning doesn't, there are places where it's just all over the board with the zoning is. Ms. Brewer, when you, you guys have people come and ask sometimes to do things places and you redirect them maybe to other spaces because, or you can't close this whatever?
Correct.
Not because of the code, but because?
It doesn't fit the location that they're wanting their event to take place. It may not be large enough, it may not have enough parking, it may close off so many streets that there may not be access to get into the event. So we do sit down, we meet with them and we try to find a logical location, practical location for them to host their event.
So, engineering, and this includes events without beer, right?
Correct, this is all events, yes.
So like if somebody says, I want to close this street, you guys might refer them to another section or another park?
Correct.
Because not all streets and not all sidewalks and public pockets are appropriate to close off?
Correct. We have, we stay in constant contact with Traffic Engineering, KPD, Fire, Public Service Facilities. We also meet once a month, we have a seat meeting, which is our special event advisory team where we take all the applications, we sit down, we take a look at the calendar, we took a look at the maps, what is already on place on the calendar, what events are already taking place in that particular area to see if it would even fit or if it's something we have to look at another date or location for.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify Councilmember Roberto's comment and Mr. Frost, your response. Did I hear correctly that beer board could call up a beer permit for approval or denial? Is that what you were saying?
Beer board could deny a special event permit.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Councilmember Hesley?
Yeah, I don't usually jump on the bandwagon, but I do want to thank Councilmember Ryder and her, what do we name you, Ms. Ball, she's supporting cast member of a lot of stuff for helping you, so she has a new title now. But thank you, I like the equitable part in all parts of the city, so I'm pretty excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Noel, do you see any issues with, you know, staffing with regard to, I guess we could see, well, obviously there's limits here with how many permits that can be going on at any one time, but do you see any issues with staffing with regard to what you're seeing here?
So as far as staffing these events, we would have to evaluate them and determine the officer presence that we would need. If we were having an event in a neighborhood, I would not only consider the event itself, but if there's gonna be a large group of people coming to the event, where they're gonna park, do we need to provide officers for that? And obviously, it goes without saying that, you know, there's only so many events that we could handle on a given day or a given weekend. So that would be certainly something that we would take into account as well and I would hope that the Police Department would have input into that.
Yeah, Councilmember Roberto, I just, I mean, absolutely, we have to take into account the capacity. You know, there might be a great event, but if they want to plan it on a marathon weekend, that's a no. We're already stretched really thin on marathon weekend, that's just one example. So, that's why the, you know, Ms. Brewer's team meets ahead and looks at the calendar so they can also, you know, guide people not just to the appropriate places, but just the appropriate times, because they're just sometimes, we can only do so much at any one time.
Okay. And, thank you, Chief. I had reached out to the Metropolitan Drug Coalition as well, just to kind of get their sense on what we were doing here, since this was pretty expansive. And I got really positive response back after they had a chance to look at it. They saw a couple of things that were good in that we saw that there's some strengthening of safety measures, which is something that beer board's really taken a big role in with preventing underage drinking and overconsumption, but also the part that we've been talking about with expanded community building opportunities and how that can really be a positive impact. So, all those I thought, all those I thought were good. I'm glad to see that the Lake Shore Park amendments are in there, so I appreciate that being in there. I believe Bill Street from Zoo Knoxville's here and he had a question he wanted to ask.
If you, since he didn't sign up, did you have a question for Mr. Street?
Well, he just asked me, he had a question he wanted to ask, so I was calling on him to be able to ask his question.
Okay, Mr. Street, I mean, if you don't, I mean, if he didn't sign up, it's supposed to be if you have a question for him about activities at the zoo, I mean?
Well, I guess I'll ask you a question then, Mr. Street. Come on up. You have a, I guess you have to give your name and address, so go ahead and do that.
Turn on the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Bill Street, President and CEO of Zoo Knoxville.
Okay, so you're one of the groups like Lake Shore where you had a specific carve-out. Did you have any questions about your carve-out?
Yeah, I just wanted a little clarity because we just saw this proposal about 15 minutes ago. I wanted to ensure that this doesn't change the zoo's ability to sell beer at any time on its property or during any of its events.
Mr. Street, we'll double check, this is first reading, so we'll double check into that. I mean, I don't think it does and your property is our property and it's part of the city, so I don't see how it would any, would change anything.
It's not a special event. You guys get an on-premise permit, is that correct?
We do, and then we noticed in 4.1 at the beginning, although it was stricken out, there was a specific call-out to Chilauie Park and specifically Zoo Knoxville, and I just wanted to ensure that this isn't changing our, the current process of how we do our business.
Well, that certainly is not the intent of the change. While Councilmember Ryder's working with Mr. Frost on that, Ms. Fugit, did you have a comment or question?
I was just gonna say, any of those questions can be answered, this does have to pass on two readings, so I appreciate your question. I think that, all I want to say about this is, the purpose of this doesn't change substantially what it takes to do a special event. It requires all the same approvals, all the same people have to be involved that were involved in the past, and applying for a special event permit does not mean you'll get one. Applying for a beer permit in a special event does not mean you will get one. Those are city council discretion, so I just want everybody to understand that too. There's no way you can have 50 special events going on at the same time. And the other deterrent to this, or not deterrent, but the thing that will minimize the number of them is it has to be a nonprofit, registered, it's gotta be an entity, not a group of friends, it's gotta be a legal entity, and you have to pay for the services you use. So, I'm not really worried about a whole rash of these happening, I think this is just an opportunity to make what is available in some parts of the city available in other parts of the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder, did you?
Can I comment on the zoo part?
Yes, please.
So, you guys have an, we will confirm, we're not passing this tonight, but it's my understanding, and if Councilwoman McKenzie has better memories and understandings than I do, you guys have an on-premise, this is not about on-premise. You have an on-premise permit, not an off-premise, you don't sell beers to go in a bag, but you have an on-premise, I hope not, you don't have that permit, I'm quite certain, you have an on-premise permit, and we're not editing anything about on-premise, you are just not one of the listed designated places that makes you distinctly different than Happy Holler, or, I'm sorry, the current code lists special places and you were one of the special places that could get like a Zufari permit to have broader event stuff. Now, you just can, as, apply for Zufari permit. That is as I understand it, and if we have messed that up at all, it will get fixed before.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Street, and welcome to your first council meeting.
Yeah.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chair. I was just gonna let Mr. Street know that I would follow up with him, I know that he's new to Knoxville, new to the position and we welcome you and we're glad to have you here. Good question, but as the Chair did speak to that, that the zoo does have an on-premise, so we will keep you updated if there's anything that is gonna impact the zoo and the operations that are in place currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Okay, well, I still have my light on for probably no great reason.
Well, I can come back to you.
Okay, well, is there somebody else with their light on?
Yes. Councilmember Roberto?
Well, before Roberto then, since you did call on me. Councilmember Roberto, let me just point out one thing I forgot to point out. Also L in 477 says, "For events with a permitted area in or abutting a residential zone, music or amplification may require a special noise permit as described in Section 189," which is code that already exists. And I referred to that and included this and then went and asked Mr. Barber, did he know about the special event permit and what time did his music, because their event is walking distance from my home. And he said, yes, we wrapped up the music last year at about 9:40 PM and they are required, it's part of the checklist process for Ms. Brewer, to require that special noise permit. And what I want to specify that I put in all my tables and charts and on the forum, because I love putting things in Excel spreadsheets, which of course still led to some errors, but anyway, special noise permits are limited to Mondays, I'm sorry, not Mondays, Fridays, Saturdays, federal holidays, and there are hours restrictions on them too. So, this is also something that wasn't in our code before and I think will be a good addition to some of the places that were already in the list, but for anywhere else that might apply.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I am working to get to yes on this thing, because I think there's a lot of really positive attributes to what we're talking about for community building. I think my biggest issue right now, well, there's several, but one of them is that, you know, we have an amended, a very heavily amended item in front of us to be voted on on first reading tonight. I recognize that we can, you know, look at this in second reading, but I just have a problem with the amount of changes that are going on here and the, you know, I would rather, I'd rather see this, you know, reviewed in its entirety without changes that are this substantial. So I just have an issue with that. The expansion into the residential districts, while that might prove not to be a problem, I haven't had a chance to review that with my constituents yet, so I'm just not really comfortable moving forward right now. I could see a lot of benefits to it, but I just haven't had the opportunity to do that. You know, we've got certain areas that already have defined structures within the code as it is that are being changed. We're adding in some new language for the lake, for Lake Shore tonight, which I think is important. So, I just don't feel comfortable voting on this one tonight. I would suggest that we might think about whether we should postpone it and pick it back up in two weeks. I know that Mr. Barber has a very tight timeline, so that may not be feasible for him, but I think as it is, I will continue to work to get to yes, but I'm probably gonna be abstaining tonight because I just have too many issues with what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ryder?
I just wanted to say that, to clarify, that everything about Lake Shore is unred lighting what was redlined, so there's nothing new about Lake Shore, it's all the same. The only thing new about it or different about it is it refers to letter M in the new Section 477 instead of the letter, whatever it was, G, I think, in the old 76. So, not new. And then, my apologies for the changes, but there was an oversight that a different type of permit, a facilities use permit, was in the possession and consumption part and it was treated completely differently and didn't match the heading. So, so those two major changes, I understand there's a lot of changes here, trust me, I've had a very stressful day and I'm weak or so, is putting language back. So putting language back is what you have in 4.1. And then, in 77 is the word distinctive, which Mr. Frost and I discussed earlier this week, is not extensive. And then, World's Fair Park is just defined accurately, I was given two streets to include in there and it didn't include the entire park and left confusion for one event that's upcoming, so wanted to accurately include that park. So, that's all I'll say at this point, and if anybody has any questions, I will let those be answered.
Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention and everyone else was an aye. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ryder, for all your work on that. That's first reading, it will be again, read again in two weeks. And, there's no one signed up for public forum? So, without objection, this meeting is adjourned, let's all go.